We're saying seven forty-five.
What would be this first and then go to the pledge?
Come on, Mike, what's going on?
Mark must be in his meeting.
Isn't anybody keeping this light on, you boys?
Hello?
Well, that works too.
Pay attention, come on!
So we'll run up there and press record.
Listen.
You're on.
PJ!
Good job, PJ. All right, good evening, welcome to the Monday, February twenty-fifth Board of Selectmen's Meeting, I'm Scott.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So the agenda for tonight's meeting is going to be, it's going to be a recognition for Sergeant O'Donohue, we're going to read the mail, by seven fifteen we'll take some public input, at seven twenty we have a fiscal update concerning the 2014 operating budget, the 2014 capital improvements plan, and an update on the snow and ice budget. At eight o'clock we have the town administrator and assistant town administrator for finance and budget, we're going to go over the May sixth, 2013 annual and special town meeting warrants, we're going to discuss the annual town report dedication, discuss a community innovation challenge grant award, and the Nagog Hill Orchard lease extension. At eight thirty we'll discuss other business and minister approval. With that, Mr. Chief Kelly.
Thank you very much. Tom's family, if you would. Sergeant O'Donohue? Thank you very much to the board for, stand right there. Thank you very much for taking the time this evening, this is a great occasion for two individuals and a family. We would like to recognize a life preserved and the officer that assisted in that regard. So I'm going to hand it to Mr. Thomas, who happens to be the recipient of Sergeant O'Donohue's good work, he can tell the story much better than I.
Yeah, my name is Glenn Thomas, I'm a resident of Tewksbury, I work at One Monarch Drive in Littleton for a company called Samblaze, it's a high-technology company. Last October ninth I was sitting in my office queue, just following a meeting, it was probably about just after nine AM, I had no symptoms whatsoever and I actually had a heart attack, I had no vital symptoms whatsoever, I had a couple colleagues come to my assistance and start CPR, phone call was made to nine-one-one, Officer O'Donohue responded, happened to be in the area and formed lifesaving CPR using an AED that he had in his patrol car. First thing I remember is waking up and Patrick's face was probably about ten inches from mine, I didn't know what had happened, I looked on him and I said, "Get the hell off me." I was wondering why it was only about eight inches from my face holding me down, I tried to get up and I was basically in his care, he brought me back to life without my colleague's assistance and his assistance and outstanding performance that day, executing his training as he had been trained to use that lifesaving equipment, I wouldn't be here today. I've made a full recovery since then, I was back to where I had open-heart surgery later that evening, and I returned to work full-time in about six weeks. The thing that's kind of strange to me is I had no prior symptoms whatsoever, avid athlete, I was running thirty miles a week and I biked a hundred miles just a few days earlier than that over the weekend, and just goes to show that something like this can happen to pretty much anybody. I'd like to thank Sergeant O'Donohue by recognizing him with a recognition award that I present to him for his heroic and lifesaving medical response and performance on October ninth, 2012, and it's a picture of myself and my family, and I thank him so much for what he did to me. We also, in the police department, we carry these coins, it signifies brotherhood in the police department and our integrity and our honesty and commitment to the community, and we, as a police department, wanted to offer you this, and just something to keep in your pocket as a good luck charm or a good heart charm, it helps you like it's helped all of us.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
I have one other comment, I wanted to thank the town of Littleton and the police department for having the AEDs available in their cruiser, if it wasn't for someone who funded that particular program, I probably wouldn't be here today, we didn't have that equipment in our building at the time, we do now, but the fact that this town appropriated funds for those to be available in their first responding vehicles was basically saved my life, so I'd like to thank the town of Littleton as well, thank you.
Congratulations. Really appreciate you coming out and giving us the opportunity to say hello. Good luck, thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Chief, did you have anything else?
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you on in the streets.
If you're all set, do you have anything else?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bus, I really appreciate the board giving us that opportunity. That's probably the best thing I'll ever get.
Just a couple of items on the mail, one is we have an invitation to ask DOT District Three Headquarters Open House Legislative Briefing with Transportation Secretary Richard Davy, that's this Thursday morning in Worcester, I'll be going to that, for the state's new transportation plan and the funding strategy, so there are a lot of meetings that are going on to describe what that is.
Is that an operation, you can just get out and?
It's to get information out, I know that they're releasing town-specific information about what projects would get funded if the transportation plan went through, there's some increase in Chapter ninety funds that would be coming to the various towns, and I hope to be able to bring back some of that specific information. The only other correspondence included here this week, we did get a letter from the Bridge of Central Massachusetts regarding it will be establishing a seven-bed residential group home for young adults, it's funded by the Mass Department of Mental Health, the facility will be located at nineteen Shattuck Street in one of the buildings adjoining the Housing Authority, and so, selectmen card, a question about impact on schools, I've asked the school superintendent to look into that, we're not sure what the age of the residents there would be, I do know that under some certain circumstances that units such as this count on your subsidized housing inventory, and that we've had other publicly-funded facilities like this that are part of what we get to count towards our forty B inventory.
That brings a good question, saying that, because I know of other houses in town, one down by the Sunoco and one off of Jennifer Street, we know if those properties are?
I can confirm, you know, in some cases we have addresses and sometimes we don't, sometimes the addresses are shielded from.
I will get you, yeah, see if we can. This is on the town road, too. Is it? Can't scrub. It's before you get the. Oh, yeah, I know technically, yeah.
I can check.
Yeah, I mean, forty B is.
The numbers count.
Okay, Keith, thank you, we'll move on to public input, anybody here for public input? Yes, sir?
Rick Finley, forty-six B of Brook Road, I wanted to bring the board up to speed on a very recent decision of mine to take the Community Preservation Act by petition, this was to surcharge commercial and industrial properties, we have coming up the possibility of purchasing the Cooper Farm, the agricultural land associated with Fletcher Property and Church Meadows, and we have three playing fields in line possibly for construction in the near future, we need millions and millions and millions of dollars, and this would double, I mean, this would increase our revenue by fifty percent, and it's just, we are among four towns out of one-hundred-and-fifty-five that don't tax commercial, and it's just foolish not to do it, so.
Sorry, what was that statistic?
We are one of four towns out of one-hundred-and-fifty-five who have CPA, who do not tax commercial and industrial, and we're running out of time, this is a really good way of doing it, but I just decided this last Thursday, I'm just moving ahead. Now, what I did when we voted in CPA originally, I did it exactly the same way, we met before the election, I mean, we had an item on the town warrant not to be voted on, but to be discussed, so that everybody could have a chance to present their opinions whether for or against it, but it wasn't a voting thing, the following week we voted on it and voted it very successfully, so I think this, I think it's a very positive.
So, are you gonna go to like a public hearing of some sort?
Yeah, no, I'll go, I'll work with Park and Raccoon, with the historical people, and we'll go to games, we'll go to the dump, which is where we did a lot of it five years ago.
So you're looking at a town meeting article?
No, this won't, well, there may be a town meeting article if you want it just for discussing, but it won't be, no action will be taken at town meeting, this is for the election the following week.
Okay, election, okay.
Is this required to be voted on by an election?
No.
Just on the matter of adoption of the Community Preservation Act and the way that Littleton proceeded initially, that it's a two-step process, the second step is always a ballot question on a regular election ballot, either an annual town election or a state, a regular state election, you can't call a special election or anything like that, so you only have a window of either once a year if it's a town, or every two years for a state election. When Littleton adopted the Community Preservation Act initially, it was done in the process of voter petition, where you have to get five percent of the registered voters to sign a petition, and then, like this, and then the result is, it then goes to the ballot. The alternative procedure is to have a town meeting article, ask for the same thing, and then it goes to the ballot. Problem with that is there has to be thirty-five days in between the date of town meeting and your annual election, so that if it went to our annual town meeting, it would take a year and six days to get to your annual election, because you only have part of a week between the annual election and town meeting, so the only way to meet the timing requirement Littleton had discovered initially is that you have the voter petition signed by at least five percent of the registered voters and a binding ballot question, and what you did when it was adopted, what year?
Two thousand and seven.
Seven?
Two thousand and seven.
Was, it was just, it was just a one percent surcharge, and this doesn't propose to change the one percent.
No, not at all.
But that you only, you assess the property tax surcharge on residential property and not on commercial, so what this petition brings was to add the other, would be to add the other commercial on this.
And both commercial and residential have a hundred thousand dollar.
Exemption.
Exemption.
You're not taxing your first one hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And this is proposing the same one percent? And did you, have you run numbers, I mean, you said it's going to increase by fifty percent maybe, is that accurate or is that just something you've got to?
Right now we're getting about a hundred and twenty-eight a year, and Bonnie did some numbers and I think it was sixty-eight.
Correct, and we ran it against the actual letty and the property values.
Okay, yeah.
So it would bring it, you know, add those two up.
Okay.
Be a good thing.
Okay.
Because it's a ballot question, we're not allowed to, we're not allowed to expend public funds on that. We can answer questions, we can provide information, but to the extent that it's a, you know, it's like with a property, two and a half override, you can't expend public funds on the activity associated with.
Advocating for, yeah.
We can provide information.
The only other possible thing that you, I don't know whether we would want to have council look at this to make sure it's in line, or is that something that you can't expend, but is that part of that? Is that part of that, you can't expend any money?
Well, no, I mean, town council is still, you know, if you get it wrong, then town council will be looking at it later.
We'll get the signatures first.
Yeah, so.
All right, well, I've got to run to another meeting, thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else from anybody? It's all people here for business, yeah. Okay, fiscal update, Bonnie, you have something for us for the 2014 operating budget?
Yes, I just have a brief update of what progress has been made, the last time I was here, the deficit stood at about three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for fiscal fourteen, today it stands at about a hundred-and-ninety-three thousand, the updates that we've received are preliminary confirmation of the school department appropriation request at the sixteen-point-four million, which is what I've had programmed into the budget since the beginning, it hasn't been formally voted yet by the committee as far as I understand, but everybody seems to be comfortable with that number at this point. The revised health insurance budget, we had planned for a ten percent increase in the premiums, we've been notified that it's a seven percent increase, we were hoping for a little bit better of a number, you know, we were pushing for two.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we've had some claims activity in the past year that we didn't have in prior years, so, you know, it's still a single-digit number, so I'm happy with that, but we'll continue to work on that. That seven percent increase versus the ten allowed us to recognize another hundred-and-thirty-thousand in savings in the budget, so that's why we're down to a hundred-and-ninety-three. At this point, we are still monitoring local receipts, this time of the year is our biggest commitment for excise, so we have to see what that commitment looks like coming in. There you go. And so there are still some components that we're going to monitor as we get closer to town meeting, but we should know in the next, you know, few weeks where we'll land, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to close that gap.
Do you know the state projections, they haven't changed?
Level.
Just all level?
Level funded, the memo highlights the changes, and basically it's just the health insurance, some preliminary confirmation on the school budget and the things that we're monitoring.
What were our previous increases to the health insurance?
It varies, some years we've had, you know, twelve percent increases, some years we've had fifteen, the last few years we've had very good experience, you know, I think last year we had a one or one and a half percent increase.
Yeah, last year was the year that we did the plan design changes, so we realized significant savings.
So it was unusual.
And so, and that lowered the base from which our further increases are coming.
But I'm just looking at this ten percent assumption, I just don't want to, if, you know, if we were at seven for the last three years, I wouldn't want to see that go down for any initial, for any subsequent budgets, I think that's a good number, and then we can work back from that.
Yes, I am holding that number in future years, because it is a good average to use, you know, when it comes in at seven, then that's a good thing.
Okay, all right, how about capital?
Capital plan, the changes in the capital plan, we've received the prioritized list of capital requests from the school department, and those are incorporated in here in priority order, and that resulted in a small reduction in the overall capital plan, so right now we have a million, six-thirty-one, seven-ninety-nine in revised requests, and we have a million, four-forty-four, seven-thirteen in available funds for capital, and that includes CPC, proposed projects and some revolving fund accounts that are used. The finance committee has tentatively earmarked three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand in maybe deferred projects, they're still working through those discussions and they haven't weighed in on everything yet, we needed to cut a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand to be in balance, so they looked at maybe three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in reductions, so, you know, we're confident that we can get that into balance. One of the items that I did put forward as a point of discussion is that they were looking at the possibility of creating a capital stabilization fund, which is something that's done fairly frequently in the Commonwealth. Monies that you put in there, you can use for any purpose that you could lawfully borrow for, capital, so in a year like this, if these numbers were the numbers that we end up with, we needed to cut a hundred-and-eighty-seven, if they targeted three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, there'd be a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand that you could, in theory, put into a capital stabilization fund and use in the future years when there are maybe larger capital requests coming up. So it's a good savings plan, it fits within the fiscal policies that we have in place, I just bring it up as a notification because they haven't finalized the request on that, but it is.
There's something in the warrant.
Right.
You have placeholder for it?
There's a placeholder for it, it's an active discussion, but they'll be voting on it shortly.
Are they looking for any direction from us, because I know a lot of the other, in this regular budget, or the operating budget, they were looking for items that we want to prioritize or cut or anything like that, are they looking for any direction from us on this?
You know.
Any feedback?
If you have feedback, they would definitely welcome it, we did put everything in priority order from the departments, so all the items that you see here are in order of priority.
I think my only priority is to get that other ambulances, you know, I know it's in there for the special community, so that we can get going.
So we can buy it sooner.
So.
It's my understanding that they are supportive of that purchase, they understand, Chief Wudzinski came in and gave an explanation of why we need it now.
Yeah.
So, while they haven't formally voted it, I, the sense is that it's.
I mean, the other capital probably is pretty mundane as far as what you see is what you get all the time.
Yeah, the only.
I don't have any, anything to say, yeah, that should come out, you know, I think, leave it up to the finance committee and the school department and the department head to make recommendations of the cuts.
Yeah, I think if, I think we can do it individually, where there's so many items, if we have some thoughts on it, we can either call the department head and find out what it is and make, you know, make our feelings on to the finance committee, I don't want to make this into a long, you know, process here, because now at least we have prioritized, but one thing, I don't know, is I don't know how a lot of these things really affect their daily, their daily work, like, I mean, police and fire are one thing, but even some of their items, I'd like to know, maybe, are they, we absolutely need to have, these would be nice to have, and this is a dream, is there any way to, for the rank of, I understand, police portable radios, you know, into the command and detective vehicles, well, I don't know if that's something that's absolutely necessary, or are you reaching for the stars and, you know, and why, I mean, I understand, oh, it's to replace portable radios, I see, but, you know, so I'm just throwing that out as an example, I don't want to go start going down, and, you know, just looking at highway, you know, I think we looked at the fork truck, or the forklift, where that's not, that seems to be more of a dream than we absolutely need that on a daily basis, but, you know, hot box trailer, things like that, so I don't know if we can get these broken down anymore than, you know, is it too much to ask the department to start breaking these down and to?
They did put them in order, though.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, it is, yeah.
If you look at the items that the finance committee has kind of earmarked for maybe removal, they're in the bottom of the list, general of each department.
Okay, well, I guess I can just leave it up to my own research, if I have questions about it, and then if you guys, you know, like I said, go over to the department heads and.
I think the biggest ones are schools, you know, they have.
Yeah. I know, and it's hard, yeah.
You just got those.
Right, so they'll meet on the fifth.
Right, it's hard to say, you know, the schools are hard, because you start with the top list, you know, Wi-Fi updates, you know, bathroom dividers, yeah, you probably need that, but then we get down to, you know, I don't know, always locker room lockers at the high school, you know, why are they so beat up, is it the football team coming in from a bad loss?
Hey, 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 oh, easy, go easy.
Whatever, you know what I'm saying, is it?
Poor design.
Well, they're the ones who have the helmets, you know, I just say, is it, okay.
Easy on them.
No, but just from, is it normal wear and tear or some type of something else that's happened on them, so.
Poor design.
Is it?
Poor design.
Okay, so we'll just leave it up to that then, to the individuals, so what I suppose is, it's going to be interesting, we had a little bit of, a couple of events. Bonnie, do you have some, something like this, some updates?
Snow and ice?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we've actually, I'm looking tonight to get a vote authorizing us to go into deficit spending, I know I kind of go through this every year, but I think it's important that everybody know that we budget for snow and ice in two different accounts, we budget the appropriation that town meeting grants us, and we budget for a deficit, so while it seems like, you know, it's, oh my god, we're going into deficit spending, we planned for this, and it's something that we do each year, so in total, we planned for six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in snow removal, we've hit it in one horrible year, you always want to budget, you know, what you think your worst-case scenario is with this deficit, but it's not too far off, it might sound like a big number, but we've hit it. So, we've pretty much burned through the two-hundred thousand that was appropriated at town meeting, so now we need to be able to access the four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that we planned for in deficit spending. As of Friday, we had twenty-six thousand dollars left, and we hadn't paid the payroll from this weekend and the supplies from this weekend, so I imagine it's going to be gone by Wednesday. This requires a vote of both the Board of Selectmen and the finance committee in order to access this, so it's an important vote. And then the other thing that I wanted to go through, because, Mr. Dusette, you asked if we could have a discussion regarding appropriating money for plowing of private ways and plowing of public ways, I did consult with the Department of Revenue, and it is okay to allocate it as that if you want to, it doesn't prohibit you from deficit spending if you need to go into deficit spending, from a practical point of view, we'd have to really allocate it based on a percentage of the roads for private versus public that are maintained, so really, at the end of the year, we're just going to look at an allocation, and right now, the, let's see, the public miles that are serviced is sixty-one point seven, and that's ninety-three point fifty-three percent of the total, private miles that are serviced is four point two seven miles, so that's six point four seven percent of the total, so at the end of the year, I'm going to look at the total expenditures and allocate it accordingly.
Right, I just want to back up a little bit to where how this came about, from when we started going through this last summer, when it was starting to look at the policy, my interpretation, because there's a line in there saying that if a town or city does decide to plow private ways, they have to have a separate line item, that was my interpretation of it, there has to be a separate.
Department of Revenue does not require that.
Not Department of Revenue, but is this law, is this, that we're allowed to do this by, there was a law that allows us to do that, and one of the caveats to that law was required that it has to be a separate line item, not by DOR, I thought there was no law.
Well, DOR administers that law, I mean, there were two issues that we're dealing with, one is that the most important thing for us is to make sure that we can deficit spend for snow and ice, period.
That was the next step, right.
And then, and then the secondary issue was, could we account separately for snow and ice removal on private ways in parts from public ways and still overspend both categories, and so the ruling from DOR is yes, we can separate them out, account for them separately and overspend them.
Right.
Both, and what Bonnie's indicating as well is that the allocation of the budget would only be on a percentage, it will not be, we will not have separate crews going out, you know, you're the private crew, you're the public crew.
And I think Ted, when you were talking about a Chapter forty, subsection six C, Minnesota is that have accepted appropriate money for snow for private ways?
Right, yeah, that you can appropriate money for a private way, and we've done that, we have appropriated money for private ways in the big budget that is for snow and ice here.
But it's all in one bucket.
It's all in one bucket, can you have two buckets, yeah, you can, you can, and you can overspend them.
Funding allocation-wise is just.
Well, and if that's.
Your best percentage, basically.
If that's the, that's the only way you can do it, one percent, because as we know, you know, I know, because I talked to Jim, you know, what, you know, is there a way to, you know, just to give us an idea how much? Because the snow and ice removal, is my understanding, is only contract and only overtime.
Correct.
So if we get a storm at eight AM and it ends at two, and the plowing ends at two AM, there's no overtime, it's only contract.
Correct.
All right. So when it goes into the night, I think the private ways take up a bigger percentage because you're taking up, you're taking the crews-
Well, it also, well, and the other part of this is that if we're doing snow removal on regular time, then we're not charging the snow and ice budget whether we're plowing a private way or a public way. So that, so that the level of, so we're not separately accounting for-
Normal business hours.
Yeah, during normal business hours. They're, they're on the clock, they're doing something and we, I mean, we don't have a mechanism for determining how many hours are they plowing a pri- plowing a private way or a public way.
No, you don't. I guess my point is, even if you're, if you're plowing even during normal business hours and you're not doing private ways, maybe you have one less contract truck on or you have one less town truck. So, you know, that cost of that contract truck to come in because you have to do this extra, you know, four and a half miles or four point two seven miles, you know, that's an extra cost that we can't track. So it's more, the cost, the actual cost of the talent is more than a proportionate percentage, is my point. And, but this, I don't know, I suggested a way to come up with that when we were emailing back and forth with this, was just to say, well, the cost would be the percentage plus another twenty percent or something, but are you saying it has to be directly proportional, the allocation?
Unless we're, unless we're going to spend more than, it's not going to cost us more to account for it than it does for us to plow it. But I'd be concerned that if we had to have, you know, a two-platoon system, you know, of-
Well, I think it's important to be in town meeting. When people look at town and vote the budget, they know what they're voting. When you're voting just smoke, it's not on ice removal.
Break it out.
We can, we can give an accounting approximation of what the cost is, but we can't, you know, no one's going to be submitting, you know, receipts that say, okay, I was on a private road for, you know-
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
Twenty-five minutes.
I learned that when I was riding with Jimmy, because he says, see, you're on this road for ten minutes, you can't have a guy pulling over right down, I was here, and then to plow and then stop again, and you can't have him doing that.
Right. I would be cautious of adding just an arbitrary twenty percent or something like that, just because you could, you could make the same argument for the employees. It's benefit costs that are budgeted and the health, you know.
Good, then throw in thirty percent.
But I mean, I'd have to add it for the employees.
Well, the one, the one cost that we can't identify is if we have to tap into the snow and ice budget, we can account for that and we've got a system to do that. And, and so we can make a, you know, a determination of the percentage of that, of that snow and ice cost as a rough approximation of-
But if it's split out like this and we go to the town meeting, right, and it's an estimation-
Right.
Okay, best estimation. The town can say, we don't want to fund that line.
Correct.
So that makes, puts it on the town, town floor to appropriate and authorize spending on private ways. My only question would be, is if we accepted this law for private, plowing private ways, is there a conflict? When town meeting says no, can we accept a law that says yes?
I would want to consult with Department of Revenue on that or Town Council, but the law allows you to appropriate for the plowing of private ways.
Right.
We do now because it's all in one bucket. I think if you break it out and you don't fund it-
Yeah, the one thing we would not want to have, let's say for the two, for the basic two hundred thousand dollars that is the snow and ice budget, we must get out of town meeting, we must, with a total of two hundred thousand for snow and ice, whether it's in two buckets or one. If we get out of there with only a hundred and thirty-two or whatever the, you know, the pro-rata amount is, then we can't overspend.
But that's, you can, you can, you can, you know, two hundred thousand is an average of fifty percent of the overall budget per year. So, you know, so take the, keep the two hundred thousand, break out the ten percent or twenty percent and take fifty percent of that and have it as line two. It's your first goal around it.
Are you creating four buckets because you're going, no, just to-
Well, I wouldn't want to send the signal that somehow we're having, you know, a rematch on the town, at the, okay, at the town meeting corral on, on this issue, because at the end of the day, we have to, town meeting must vote at least two hundred thousand for snow and ice.
I get you.
And the only thing is, is if one, one big bucket where, where the money we've always had, we have again, or is it two buckets where we're accounting for it separately? If there was a motion on the floor to reduce the total snow and ice budget by sixty-seven thousand dollars, we're, I mean, we're sunk. So we can't, we can't overspend.
You want to give it, you want to give a go around and come back and, I don't, I don't, I don't, you guys, you guys support, if, let's see, I just wonder if you support a separate line item or do you not support a separate line item?
I thought this was just being used to give us an idea of some town project.
But I think it's good for the town to have an idea.
I think it's a good idea, the town is to see what it is there, but I'd hate to go to town meeting and actually have that happen.
Have what happen, have it, the two hundred thousand device?
Well, we talked, the two hundred thousand, that can be fixed, because that's what we put in as the board into that line, you know, and that's what they vote on. I think, as we discussed earlier, having some type of plowing committee, see what the result is and put this out towards them too. You know, for now, we, you know, we still have October to vote if we wanted to split the line item, you know, instead of annual, we can do it at our special town meeting. Maybe we can get that committee together and make a decision before next fall season. So I would make the recommendation, let's vote to that deficit spend, table this, I think it's a admirable and a good idea to break that out like that, but let's go through the process of getting the snow committee, the snow kings to get-
My brother vote, let's run the table, let's vote it.
Oh, do you want to? Why? Then you're saying you don't want to do it, just table it.
No, I would say, I just want to vote, because I want to see, because I think it should be on there and I want to vote that way, that it should be on there as a separate line item.
So you don't want to give it another opportunity?
No, you can always give another opportunity if it's not on there. I mean, we could vote, we could have this vote every, every meeting if we wanted to, but-
That's fine.
But, but you guys have to make a move, motion, so if you guys don't make the motion, then that's fine. That's the way it goes.
I have a question back, just going to the deficit. We start off with the two hundred thousand, but now we go to four fifty, is that-
It's on next year's tax period.
Right. It's reserved against next year's tax budget. And we do this every year, we plan for it.
In our fiscal 2014 spending plan, we've set aside four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of deficit spending. And so if we don't need it, and this is the situation we were in last, last November, that we had, in the fiscal, in the fiscal thirteen budget, we had set aside four hundred and fifty thousand, which we ended up not needing, so we, but it was still there to be appropriated, so we took it and we, and we applied it to the, the track.
Right.
So we use that for one-time funding.
Now, do we have to authorize the whole four fifty now? Is that just the easiest way to go?
You're not authorized-
Oh, you just don't-
So they're gonna spend the two hundred, is what we're doing.
I'll make a motion if the board's ready, move it to the Board of Selectmen, vote for sort of the master and watch chapter forty-four subsection.
Thirty-one D.
Thirty-one D. Thank you. To approve-
Can you get us a light over there, Mark?
Incurring expenses in excess of the available appropriation for snow and ice removal for fiscal year 2013.
Second. Then move it to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm not going to make a motion on the end.
Okay. Thank you for your consideration. Moving on. Bonnie again, right? May sixth.
No, this is me. Town meeting, warrants. We will, it usually takes us several meetings to get through the entire warrant. There are some routine articles you could probably vote to insert tonight and we can go through these. At the next regular meeting on May eleventh, there will be a number of folks that we'll have in, including scheduled conservation, park and rec to come and talk to us about the land exchange that they've worked out, because that requires town meeting vote to file a home rule petition. Personnel board may have some language changes, no, nothing to the salary plans, but some language changes to the personnel bylaw. The sewer study committee needs to come back and talk to us about, about the article they're requesting for borrowing authority. And there are, the land sale committee wants to come in and talk about a list of additional properties to be added to the tax title butters program. And we may have others as well that we need to, we haven't met yet with the planning board. I know that they're looking at some potential zoning amendments, so there might be some, some significant discussion at a, at a future meeting. In fact, it may be more than we can get down on March eleventh, which is our next regular meeting. The warrant closes on the twenty-second. We may, in the last couple of years, we've even scheduled the meeting that the following week, the week that the warrant closes, and we may need to do that this year, which would be March eighteenth, or a picket date. As we get closer to it, we'll see if we can get it done on the eleventh. We will try to. If we can't, we may need to pick another date prior to the close of the warrant on the twenty-second.
Do you have any figures for some of these? Any chance, I mean, the bills of previous years, line item transfers, any of that broken down yet?
Not yet.
All right. Do we want to, do we want to know that guy before we vote on him?
Well, usually it's a two, it's a two-step process to put it in, to insert the articles and then you'll have detailed motions.
Right.
Certainly in the case of the line item transfers, that'll, that'll get finalized. Bonnie had told us about the Minuteman vocational bill for forty thousand. We'd like to have a placeholder in the special to fund any collective bargaining agreements that we reached. This is the one that we're working on, which should be agreement singular, but-
Should be, I would hold off on that, see if I can get it all back.
So, and for the capital articles, we identified one project thus far, the ambulance that we put in the special town meeting, and Bonnie is requesting establishment of a capital, capital stabilization fund and then to transfer some monies to fund that stabilization fund. So those are the items that we've identified thus far for the special.
The annual's in here too.
Yeah, yeah. The special town meeting are the things that would be happening in this fiscal year, you know, by June thirty. And then the annual town meeting is for, is for the fiscal year beginning July first. And in that one, we have some routine articles, selection of certain town officers like fence viewer and, you know, I don't keep a, yeah, the, to receive annual ports, the borrowing authorization, the omnibus operating article, the Board of Water Commissioners will bring us their water enterprise fund budget. The Community Preservation Committee, that's another group that we need to meet with, that we will need to spend some time meeting with. They meet tomorrow night to go over some of their potential spending articles for the coming year. Bonnie's been going over the capital project article. We probably don't want to insert this one yet because we haven't finalized the list. Then an appropriation of forty-three hundred dollars into the stabilization fund in order to meet the goal of his five percent, five percent of the total operating budget we want to have set aside in, in funds. And in order to do that, we have to add four thousand dollars.
You have a question about that? That's to get the fund to the five percent?
Yes.
Okay. So it's not five percent of the budget every year that we have to put in there?
No, it's just to keep a five percent.
We have, we have a balance that continues, that, that, that we're not taking money out of, and, but we do need to put a little more in there.
And that, right, you mentioned that five percent, which just gives us our credit rating, possible credit rating.
Right. Right, that we can say we're compliant with the policy. The next article, personal exemption account, this was when we resurrected at the fall town meeting. There was a vote taken back in two thousand, maybe, or a long time ago, to allow for cost of living increases.
It allows us to give an exemption of twenty percent more-
Okay.
-than what the statute reads. And we've been doing that.
We've been doing that, but we've been told we have to vote to do it every year.
Right.
So we'll be voting to do it every year. The trust fund commissioners are authorizing fourteen thousand change. The school department, we're waiting for the schools to tell us which project they want to apply it to. The Personnel Board will be finalizing some text changes perhaps to the Personnel Bylaw and bring those forward. The standard list of revolving funds, we have to vote each year. We have a placeholder article here for a borrowing article for the Littleton Common Sewer Project. We'll wait to meet with the committee that will give the specifics of that. Compensating balance agreement is a routine article. The senior work program, we're increasing from fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars, the amount that's set aside for that program. We have the annual authorizing vote for use of state chapter ninety funds for roadway improvements. We have a list of properties to go into the tax title of butter lot sales program. This is a list we've gotten from the committee, but we want to have, we want to set up a time for you actually to meet with the committee and talk about that. We have a placeholder article also for, for the land exchange for, between conservation and recreation that requires a town meeting vote-
When is that? I thought that was all, I thought that was all set.
It's all, it's all set, yeah. It's all set. We just, that, we need to have everyone sign a document simultaneously. They'll be coming in a meeting with us on, at our next meeting. And then the Board of Selectmen needs to submit a home rule petition article to have town meeting request that the state allow the open space property to be taken out of that use and put in, and put in recreation and vice versa for the recreation property. The Conservation Commission, who we'll be meeting with next time, has indicated that they're looking for some amendments to the wetlands protection bylaw, including a no-build zone within twenty-five feet of the wetland. We haven't received a language from them yet and Town Council will review it and then we'll bring that forward for you to review. And then we have a sewer easement article for Grismill and Surrey. That was one of the provisions of the post-community agreement that you signed at the last meeting. So there may be other articles that we'll learn as well as, as Rick Finley indicated earlier, there may be a land purchase article for the Congregational Church Meadow property. We're going to discuss that with, with the Community Preservation Committee tomorrow night and representatives of the church. One of the questions will be, do we need to go forward at this town meeting in, in May or is it something that might be able to wait till, till fall town meeting? And I think that's what's on our radar screen so far. Also, there's the, oh, there's the potential, we just met last week, late last week with a local company that's looking to make some major renovations at two ninety-five Foster Street, which would add about a hundred and sixty jobs for quite a high-tech firm. So we're, we may be engaged in discussions with them about a, about a TIF agreement and we may or may not want to time that for annual town meeting vote. If we do, we'll bring something forward. If not, it may wait till the fall.
Get that turned around, right? I mean, I guess you can just copy and paste a lot from the, the last one.
All right, so a quick review here. On the special town meeting, article one, two, three, four, no, article one, two, three, five, six is the stabilization fund. Do you want to wait until we hear back from the Finance Committee on that?
It would be fine.
All right. That's good.
And so, yes, wait.
Well, well, the funding of the capitalization fund, they haven't finalized what their recommendations are, so I guess we can, we can have the establishment of the fund, but we just won't fund it yet.
Yeah, you can fund it with a zero balance? Yeah, you can fund it with a zero balance, I mean, you can.
Yeah.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes we've established a fund, and then we fund it later.
All right. And on the annual, do you want to vote on the special first? I'd be happy to make that motion for you, Mr. Alex. Move that Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto warrants for the Monday, May sixth, 2013, special town meeting, subject to the approval, as to, from, by Town Council. Article one, Board of Selectmen, vote it by a year. Article two, Board of Selectmen, fiscal 2013 line item transfer. Article three, Board of Selectmen, fiscal year 2013 Minuteman vocational bill. Article five is not going to go on, yeah, that's a.
Yeah, that goes on.
Article five, Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, 2013 capital items available funds, specifically for the ambulance. Article six, Board of Selectmen, establish a capital stabilization fund. And Article seven, Board of Selectmen, fund the capital stabilization fund. Second.
They're moving seconded to approve said articles, all those in favor, so you know how I'm saying aye.
Aye. Then, on the annual town meeting, just a quick preview before we make the motion. Article one, Article two, Article three, Article four. Yep. Article eight, Article nine, Article ten, Article eleven.
And you want to not do ten and eleven?
No.
No? You could do twelve.
All right, there you go. Article twelve. Article fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen, and twenty. Move that Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles onto the warrants for Monday, May sixth, 2013, annual town meeting, subject to approval, as to, from, by Town Council. Article one, Board of Selectmen, town officers. Article two, Board of Selectmen, annual report. Article three, Board of Selectmen, borrowing authorization. Article four, Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, fiscal year 2014 operating budget. Article eight, Board of Selectmen, stabilization fund. Article nine, Board of Selectmen, personnel exemption amounts. Article twelve, Board of Selectmen, fiscal year 2014 involving funds. Article fourteen, Board of Selectmen, compensating balance agreement. Article fifteen, Board of Selectmen, senior work program. Article sixteen, Board of Selectmen, use of chapter ninety funds. Article eighteen, Board of Selectmen, home rule petition, conservation, recreation, land exchange. And Article twenty, Board of Selectmen, sewer easement on Griss Mill Road and Surrey Road.
So I just have a quick question, so this is getting those articles with the number tied to those names, it's not putting any language in? Just inserting, or inserting it with the language that's in them right now?
In the case of, let's see, the only, of, of those articles, the only ones with a blank in the warrant are the, the home rule petition.
Okay.
For, which Town Council will, will fill in with the language that needs to identify the properties.
Okay.
The other ones would be, if it's a, if it's a spending article, and it doesn't call, have a dollar amount, then it would be the motion that will contain the dollar amounts, probably with the operating budget.
Okay. So it's a moving seconded to insert the list of articles into the, in May sixth, annual town meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just a minute, Jerry. Okay. That covers four A. Jerry, did you want to have something you want to?
Yes, Jerry, I hope you're into a state road, the question I had was on the easements article, and it seems like it's going to be all up or all down, and I'm wondering whether it would make sense to do that lot by lot, in case townspeople consider some of the lots to be of value as open space. I know Rick had mentioned.
Yeah, I know, I could see the point where one or two lots, we were saying this, one of the two lots might be.
Yeah, Rickett mentioned something about a couple of them connect to a pond, for example.
Yeah, I think what this article is doing, though, is just allowing the easements, and I think if you're going to start.
Yeah, there's two things, one, the Selectmen's obligation under the agreement is to put all of them in an article, and the question maybe you're asking is, can town meeting vote to parse that article and to pass some but not others, and, you know, I think that the moderator could make a ruling on that, I'm presuming he could.
Okay, I was just wondering if townspeople would have the option.
We've met our obligation.
Yeah, okay, that's a good point, okay. Okay, annual town port dedication?
It's been a practice in recent years to dedicate the report in general to all those who served the town and passed away in the year of the report, but also to call out some of the deceased, for, for special recognition, if they had done some, you know, certain, long surgery on the town board.
I thought we made a decision last year, if someone wanted to say something, they could get up and say something, and that's how it went.
No, no, your practice, your, your practice has been to actually call out, you know, three or four people.
This is just for the dedication, I get, I'm thinking about the service recognition, my bad.
This is.
I'm going to go forward, could be made a look into it.
Do we have nominees for the?
The town clerk had annotated her, her list that she supplied us.
Oh, yeah, I can see.
So you can receive this list now, and perhaps we can vote on it at our, at our next meeting.
So the entire board will have an opportunity to speak.
Yes.
And the dedication. Five?
Six if you count the checkmarks.
But we know who Joe Colby was, but I don't know, Graham? I don't know that gentleman. The other same.
Library trustee.
Library trustee?
Yeah, I'm seeing a couple of young people on here, too. Those might be special to call out, too.
So we can bring this to finalize this.
Bring us the next one.
Okay, okay.
Four C.
I'm happy to announce that the town is co-recipient of a sixty thousand dollar grant from the state under the Community Innovation Challenge Grant Program. This is our second grant, or second year in a row that we've received a grant for a regional transportation initiative. In the first round of this funding program, we received a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to, for share transportation project, with which we hired a consultant, we being the towns of Acton, Boxborough, Littleton, Maynard, and Stowe, those five towns received the grant in round one. We hired transaction associates as a consultant to help us develop a public-private partnership, a transportation management association, which would help guide the future of, of service from commuter rail station to and from local businesses between the towns. And we just added a, added two more towns, Westford and Concord, as now part of a seven-town regional effort, and we received a sixty thousand dollar grant from, from the state to help us implement the Transportation Management Association. So it's, it's a goal of the boards to do this, it gets at, the recognition that it's the last mile when you get off the commuter rail, public transit, that it's getting you from where that transportation is to where the jobs are, it's all about, you know, meeting the, the needs of, of our employees who come from elsewhere, but also, it, this system would serve folks in town, and we're looking to better coordinate the equipment that our various councils on aging are operating, are looking for central dispatch that would serve several of the towns together, rather than each of us having our own separate structures. We've got GPS devices on all of the COA fleets for the five towns that were funded in the first round of the grant, and that's given us a lot of information about where each of us are sending our equipment, and in many cases, they're going to the same place. And we, and the hope is through more of a coordinated dispatch between the councils that we could get more mileage out of our investment. So it's, it's great to see this, this support, there's business support as well, we, our efforts are being supported locally by IBM, Sam Park and Company, and Piva Technologies, also Cisco Systems in Boxborough has been supportive, and along with Red Hat in Westford. So we're looking to have this Transportation Management Association be, you know, a public-private effort, joint effort, where businesses and the municipalities are helping to figure out the, our solutions to our mutual transportation problems. They're already spending, spending money to send vans down to Aleweck to pick up their employees and bring them up here. If we can have a better system that makes use of, you know, the enhanced service that we'll have ultimately at the commuter rail station, and to, and have more coordination between the towns, it's going to benefit us all, so. Happy to report on the, that the grant has been awarded.
So this association there, still in fact-finding?
Yeah, yeah, we haven't set up anything yet, we have some boilerplate, the consultant that we have, transaction associate, set, helped to set up a TMA for Metro West area, so they've got a lot of experience doing this, and we're, we'll hope to be seeing some of the fruits of that labor later this year.
Sounds good. And Nigard Hill Orchard Lease?
This is a proposed one-year extension to the existing lease for the orchard, that the last few years, we've been doing one-year at-a-time extensions. You're allowed to do that if, without bidding, if the value of the real property interest is less than twenty-five thousand dollars, which a one-year lease is less than that value, because I'd like to be able to keep the current lessee there and in operation for another year.
I will be working with Bonnie to, I've done these leases before for the state, so I'm going to work on a document to get a new lease agreement in place, so we don't have to.
Okay. Ready for motion?
Sure.
Move that Board of Selectmen vote to execute further extension from March first, 2013, to March first, 2014, the June twenty-second, two thousand lease agreement, Nigard Fruit, Fruit.
Fruders.
Fruders, Inc., for the Morrison-Nigard Orchard property, on the same terms and conditions as the lease has extended.
Second.
They're moving seconded to approve the Nigard Hill Orchard Lease, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Fruders. Fruders. Frudy Fruders.
Regarding minutes, Jimmy, you weren't here last time, so.
I was here. That's just a mistake.
Is that, okay.
Yeah. So, we can't make a motion.
Make a motion, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes for Monday, February fourth, two thousand thirteen, the town offices.
They're moving seconded.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Helen Ford. Make a motion to adjourn. This is an all-time record.
Sorry.
It's seconded.
They're seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Why is she not going to let me in, she's like, she's going to do it on Monday night?